And if you've been here or pay attention, this will be a bit of a repeat, but we love that because it's a part of our culture. So the vision of our district is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And our mission that supports that, of course, is that the School District of Milton, in partnership with our community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. And on that note, we will call to order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, May 12th. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Rich, are you aware of anything we need to change on our agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
I move through the agenda as presented.
I'll second that. And Tracy's motion, seconded by Rick, to approve the agenda as we have it. Does anyone have questions? I hear none. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. We have an agenda. And bear with me as I'm getting into board docs here. First item on our agenda is our board reorganization or election of officers. We tabled that from the previous meeting because we couldn't all be here. Wonderful that we all are tonight, so we will pile ahead now. So I will give a little bit of an overview of what we're going to do, just so everybody's got a clear, clear understanding of what we've got to accomplish here. So we are electing the board officers. There are four of them, of course, president, vice president, clerk, and treasurer. And we are electing a CISA II delegate. CISA II is a cooperative educational services agency that we belong to, and as such, have a delegate to that body that lobbies on our behalf at the state level. And also, there's a statewide organization, we call it WASP, acronym SOUP we live in here, Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And as it sounds, that's a group of folks statewide that all school boards belong to, and we have a representative or a delegate to that body too. So those are the people that we've got to kind of reinstall or install for tonight. So as such, we will open nominations here momentarily. I will go sequentially, president, vice president, clerk, and treasurer. As I move through those, we will open nominations for any particular office. And at that time, nominations can be brought forward, certainly only from this body. That's the way this has to work, of course. You can nominate yourself, and it does not require a second. And then, if someone is nominated, the first thing I will do is ask them if they accept. And if they do, they become a nominee. When no more nominees get brought forward, we can close nominations. For any particular office, if there's only a single nominee, it is procedurally correct and preferred if someone would move to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for that person. And provided that passes, that's the most efficient succinct way to deal with a single nominee. In the event there are two nominees, or I don't know if we've ever had three, but if there are two for any particular office, once nominations are closed, if I'm chair here, I will give each nominee a chance to speak on their own behalf and suggest why they should serve in that capacity to their fellow board members. If they've each had a chance to do that, it is also correct, if there's, it's somewhat like discussion, if any other board members have a comment, have a support statement, have any kind of rationale towards one of the nominees or not. So that's the procedure we'll follow. When those comments have been exhausted, or if none are offered, then we will vote. This is one of the only places we're allowed to do a secret ballot. All of our other votes are very public, very prominent, such that everybody knows exactly what we're doing. Statutes allow us to do this by secret ballot. Chelsea has some pieces of paper here. In the event we have two nominees for a particular office, she will pass those out. Seven of us will write our choice down, fold it in half, pass them to her, and then for the moment that it takes to tabulate, she'll announce what the results are, and we'll proceed forward after that. So is everybody clear? Questions at all? Some of you have been through this a number of times, some of you not as many. So I wanted to be very, very thorough with what I think we're going to do. And you can't tell I've done this a couple of times. Okay, nominee, I'm sorry. Am I speaking too loudly?
There's an echo coming out of one of those. I don't know. Sorry, I could just, I was.
I caught a lot of that too. Maybe I'm speaking too loudly. The two of those come from one of those.
One of these two.
It may have all the time we've ever seen.
That's okay.
All right, we'll try that. If you get any feedback online, or if anybody in the audience hears it, please let us know, and we'll do our best to make it function the way that it should. Okay, having said that, we'll start with president, and I will open nominations for the office of board president.
I'll nominate Annette Smith for board president.
And Annette, you accept? Okay, Annette accepts. And I will nominate Rick Mullin. I'll turn to Rick and ask. Rick accepts. Okay, are there other nominations for board president? That is the second call, and procedurally, we need to do three, and so I'll do a third and final call for board president. I see none, so I would need a motion from someone to close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
So Rick's motion is seconded by Tracy to close nominations. Questions on that? So all in favor of closing, please say aye. And opposed? Okay, Rick and Annette have both been nominated, and in no particular order, I guess maybe Annette was nominated first, so I will jump to her. And you can address your fellow board members and tell us what, whatever you need to tell us.
I am proud of the board president because of all my experience I have in K-12 over 31 years, given deep understanding of these issues that are faced by both the board and our community, and also with my experience of being president and being on boards, both for international study and education, for the school board, for the library in Milton, for the library systems, for their, their war with, to give you experience with both writing boards, as well as boards that are merging multiple organizations together, and it's delightful.
Okay, and we'll transfer to Rick.
Okay, I really didn't have a speech, I guess, but, um, I guess my, I just want to talk about my fellow board members, I think my six years of experience on this board, I can turn it around as well. I look forward to people.
Okay, as I mentioned, when they were done, if anyone else has anything they want to offer, now would be the time. And I will just kind of let that be open. I would offer a word for folks. I have nominated Rick, and in an obvious move, I'm not nominated, so I'm not going to continue in this role nor would I want to at the moment. But I am fully in support of Rick taking over this. I have watched Rick's very capable board experience, leadership committees that he has led for us on the board here have been, have been done really, really professionally and accurately and whatnot, so I'm thoroughly convinced that Rick can do what it takes here, and I would encourage, you know, all of my fellow board members to support Rick. He's the, in my estimation, the right next person to lead our group and carry on the really, really good work if we all got nominated here in Milton. Anyone else to offer anything for either candidate?
I'll start out there. I nominated Annette, who's been on the board for one year, but in one year we've worked together, I think she's capable. I think Rick's very capable as well. I don't think we can lose all this vote here, so, you know, I, I just felt weird needing to change, and I think that to bring that change, and if it's Rick, we're going to be successful in the way, so.
I agree, we don't lose. I was, I was going to say the same thing, I wanted to say a minute of reflection, thank Joe, obviously you won't be president, but I do appreciate my two years on the board, you've been very helpful to me, and I just want to say thank you.
Chelsea, do you have the paper? Okay, if you're done, Chelsea, can I talk to you, please? There might be a little bit of dead air here, you'll have to bear with us. I did not write any jokes, or not entertaining. Tabulate for us and let us know what the count is.
Do I need to do it real tight as I'm doing it, or?
Nope, nope. Just make two piles of column, I think is probably what's happened most of the time.
Annette four, Rick three.
Okay, congratulations. Annette is the board president. Now, it's typical or customary to pass the gavel, so to speak, and imagine if I wanted that, do you want to continue running the election and walk through the rest of the offices? That's what would be normally the case here, but I guess not.
If that's normal, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, that would be, I would, I would consider that, so.
All right. So then the next one is the vice president?
Correct.
So I would open nominations for vice president, I would nominate Joe. Joe?
I would accept.
Any other nominations?
I don't think there are any more.
Yes.
Any other nominations?
Digital citizenship is not my strong suit.
So I have an opportunity to not involve John and Joe to raise the stakes of the place of choice? John, he's on his board, so he can vote first.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'll make a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Yes, you care, okay, so I go with that, John?
Uh, I'll jump in first. Tracy's in there. Just Tracy, direct with the.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, so, you know, I wasn't sure about this position, or, you know, giving up the treasurer spot, but, you know, I've been on the board for three years, and by, as I transitioned to this rework, it was kind of, where would I best be suited for the board? And would the board want me to do whatever position I get nominated for? So I'll just start out there, I think I'll work well with Annette. Obviously, I nominated her for president, so the board sees fit that I get four votes or more, and so if it's Joe, again, same thing, I, I think we walk away in a good way.
Sure, so I think obviously it would be my pleasure to support our board president in this role, if that's what the board chooses. My, living through what we've lived through here, probably would bear some, some help at some point, with whatever the challenges are, I'd be happy to offer that. Got a really thorough understanding of Robert's rules, if that needs to be leaned on, that's fine too. So if the board is amenable, I would be happy to continue in this role. So we'll go with that. Slips of paper should be coming out.
John four, Joe three.
Congratulations.
All right, so next we have the clerk. I'm opening nominations for clerk of the board.
I nominate Jennifer Johns for clerk. I accept.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Jennifer Johns.
I second that.
So Joe seconds? I'll make a favor, please say aye. Congratulations, Jennifer. We're going to move on to, you said CISA II.
Representative, yeah.
Record nominations with pressure of the board.
I would nominate Tracy Hannah.
Tracy.
I would accept.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Tracy Hannah. Second.
Jennifer Johns? I'll make a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? CISA II, CISA II rep? I'll open nominations for the.
Currently, who is serving in that, remind me please?
Mr. Citaure.
Okay, then, yeah.
So I'm opening nominations for the CISA II rep?
I'll nominate Jennifer Johns for CISA II.
I'll accept.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I would move to close and cast unanimous ballot for Jennifer Johns, we are CISA II representative.
Second.
So motion for Joseph. Tracy, I'll make a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Motion for Chris, my last one, last one is our WASP affiliate, which I think is bad.
It is.
What are the nominations for the line?
I'll nominate Annette Snow.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion and to close.
I'll say three times. Any other nominations?
No. I'll make a motion to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Enzo as our WASP affiliate.
I'll second that.
So motion for Tracy is second. Rick, I'll make a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Motion for Chris. All right. So we have our election of officers, maxed days. Is there anything else I have to do on my Washington?
We can put a bow on that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your support. I'll move on to action, I'll leave for minutes.
I'll move to approve the finish for the regular meeting held on April 28, 2025, as presented.
I'll second that.
So motion for Tracy is second. Any questions or comments? I'll make a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Next we have the motion on our vouchers.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers, totally $776,660.50, as presented.
Second.
Joe? I'll make a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Motion for Chris. I'll make a comment, any?
I picked up the sheet, no, I'm inside it.
No, I'm inside it. Next, we move on to red hawk recognition, and Joe, I can agree with you.
Yeah, I neglected to engage some of my fellow board members to do this, and we certainly will keep that mindset as we move forward, we want everybody to participate, but because I didn't do that, I said I would step forward and do this. So I'm going to make my way around to the front. You've been following us for a couple of meetings, this is very worthwhile, and something we're very proud of about my entire staff. You all nominated some of your peers for what we're calling Red Hawk Recognition here, and we're choosing a few folks each, each meeting to honor and recognize for all the outstanding things they do. So we have a nominee that couldn't make the previous meeting, so we're going to do that one. We've got a second nominee, and then I have a group of folks, so, so we don't get overloaded up here with folks. We're going to do the two individual nominees, so I would ask Sarah Breckel to come forward, and Jasmine Sharp, you would join me up front here. I have to draw a signature on these, but I am entirely unprepared, but that's okay. We will get this.
You're probably.
We've agreed more than an average person, you think?
Excellent, so, no particular order here. I would do Ms. Sarah first, because we missed you last night.
Yes.
So obviously, all of you know Sarah, we know and love her, she's taken pictures, she's getting everybody the recognition they so rightly deserve. This is our chance to recognize Sarah. And Sarah is nominated by Stacy Skimp, and Stacy's kind words would share that Sarah Breckel bleeds MHS. And I think we all know that. She gives so much to Milton High School students and staff, and I do not know how she does it all. She is such a giver, and high school, and high school students would not have many of the opportunities they have without her. And I'll remind you that the certificate reads, Red Hawk Recognition School District Milton, the source presented to Sarah Breckel, English teacher, yearbook advisor, school newspaper advisor, student council advisor, and Milton made coordinator. And that barely fits, right? In recognition of your outstanding service to our students, families, and our community, accept the congratulations of our entire district and school board.
Thank you so much.
Transition to Jasmine, was nominated by Nichelle Griffith. She is one of the most trauma-informed teachers I have ever met. She responds to students in a way that makes them believe they are special and they'll be loved unconditionally. I see it every time I go into her classroom. When a student showcases challenging behaviors, she always responds with a curious brain instead of a judgmental one. I love that about her, as you would. This award is presented to Jasmine Sharp, 4K teacher, for your outstanding service to our students, families, and our community. Please accept the congratulations and admiration of all of our district and school board. All right, now for the army. This is our Act 20 team. Julie Musgrove, Abby Nash, Amy Apples, Crystal Palmer, Rebecca Robinson, Katherine Grady, who couldn't join us, Jessica Sheets, and Christina Rucknow. Any of you that are here, please come up in front. Um, this was multiple nominees, so we're not going to credit any particular person, but I will read to you what the, what this thing called, the folks shared with us. The district, Act 20, has been actively working to implement the new Wisconsin Act 20 law and ensure that everything is in place for assessing early literacy skills in grades 4K to 3. It's impressive how thorough the team has been, from engaging with professional development opportunities, to developing materials and offering direct support for our teachers. The effort to adapt to new software and navigate through the assessments shows a lot of dedication to both compliance and student success in our district. And obviously, the certificates are all the same, I will not read them all to you, but please join me in congratulating Julie, Abby on this end, Amy is back here. I beg your pardon, I haven't met a couple of you, so reach your hand out, Crystal. Rebecca must be here, I know Katie and Jessica is here. Christina, as I mentioned, Katie Grady is gratefully recognized if couldn't join us tonight, so please congratulate, please join me in congratulating and recognizing the outstanding efforts of our act. Thank you all. You're back on.
Like every board meeting, we have a number of great things to celebrate that are happening across our school district. Last week was Staff Appreciation Week, and we use that meeting to recognize all of our staff members who contribute to making great things happen across our school district. I might be biased, but I think they could be of the best staff of any school district in the state of Wisconsin. And great things are happening across all of our schools and departments, and it's all because of the work of all of our staff members. So shout out to, and appreciation to our staff across the district. Throughout the week last week, I want to thank parent groups, student organizations, businesses, community members, board members, and administrators who provided meals, treats, and kind messages to show appreciation of our staff. The Northside Student Council is organizing a Blankets of Hope project. Students have created fleece blankets and wrote personalized notes of encouragement, which were then donated to local organizations supporting individuals experiencing homelessness. This small act of kindness has a big impact, so thank you to the Northside Student Council. The Milton High School Student Council partners with the Milton Summer Lunch Program to provide three weekly meals to any child in the district. There's a fundraiser coming up on Sunday, May 18th, at the Home Zone, that will be from 4:00 until 8:00 p.m. Everyone is welcome to stop and learn more about how to support the partnership between the Milton Summer Lunch Program and Milton High School Student Council on this important community program. We are in the middle of spring concert season. Throughout the month, we have concerts at all of our schools, some of them still coming up, but some outstanding performances. And earlier this month, 24 high school students competed at the State Solo and Ensemble Festival at UW-Whitewater, each earned a top two or better ranking. And congratulations to our student musicians and to the outstanding educators in our music department. And finally, this Friday, May 16th, we invite our community to join us at Milton High School for a special, special recognition event honoring Dennis Campion and Jim Carlowden, two MHS alumni, longtime supporters of youth athletics. Prior to the baseball game that night, there will be a community tailgate prepared by the Milton FFA, and then we will be celebrating prior to the baseball game respite. I think the tailgate, if I remember right, starts at 5:30, and the baseball game?
The first pitch is 6:15.
6:15.
6:50?
I just want to take a minute, I hope you had your thoughts about the lives for their staff. For my own few cents in there, which I've become a part of the board members too, and I've always said you sound special, I'm a little bit of this staff, really good. Educators in general, just rise up, that's what they do. There's some wonderful in the staff, as a testimony, what we just saw here, just the good people, the family, what I see on board, I consider remarkable, thank you. I appreciate all the work. We wouldn't have this if this didn't happen. The next thing that I had, if you want to quote the documents up, if you want to open up the staff survey first. Every spring, we survey our staff and survey families, we use Qualtrics as our survey tool. We will bring more detailed information to the board data workshop, as we have in the past, that we've had in the summer, but I wanted to highlight a few key points from our surveys, and as you can see in the staff survey, this is the third year that we've taken the staff survey. We continue to have more staff members participate and fill in responses. And with this survey, one of the key questions and scores that you get is what's called a net promoter score, or an NPS, and it asks respondents if they would recommend your school district to someone else, and it's on a scale from 10 is the highest score, down to 1 is the lowest score. You can see the description in the smaller print, that someone is considered a promoter if they give the school district a score of nine or 10, a detractor if they give 0 through 6, and passive if they give a score of 7 to 8. And then the net promoter score is the difference between the promoters and the detractors, so it's taking the folks that scored 9 or 10 minus the folks that gave it a score of 0 through 6. And you can see our district's net promoter score is 28, and according to Qualtrics, the score that is above 0 is considered good, and a score of 40 or higher is exceptional. So you can see that our district's NPS score has increased every year that we've given this, and our school and department NPS score is 37, which is extremely strong in both of those areas. In areas to celebrate, you can see a number of different things that are listed. It has the average score on a scale of 1 to 5, with 5 being the highest, both from this year, then it has the historical scores for that same question, going back to 24 and 23. And then next to it also is the percent that agreed or the percent disagree with that statement, because a 5 means a strongly agreed, a 4 is a. Because a 5 means a strongly agreed, a 4 is an agreed, a 3 is in the middle, a 2 is disagree, and a 1 is strongly disagree. So for example, my teammates have my back. 93% of our respondents agreed with that statement and only 3% disagreed with that statement. I won't go through all of these, because you can see the very high scores in a lot of different areas that we have. And then we also look at opportunities for growth. And you can see three different areas that were the lowest scores. Someone at work coaches me on how to improve the way I do my job. You can see that 58% of the people agreed with that statement, 24% disagreed. And you can see that that's down a bit from the previous year. And the next one, the opportunity to be involved with decisions that affect me, was our second lowest overall score, 3.61, although that continued to improve from previous years. And I received recognition from my principal or department supervisor for excellent work, while still strong with 59% agreeing and 17% disagreeing, was the next lowest. What we do as a district with both the staff and family surveys is we dive in at a district level and at each school and department level. And for any opportunities for growth, we work with our staff in those areas to identify things that we can do to address those areas of growth, and we celebrate the areas to celebrate.
So wait, before we go, can we submit any questions on this one or on the next one?
Sorry.
Are there any questions on this survey before we go on to the next one?
And then the staff survey was also completed this spring. That also is... Excuse me. The family survey was also completed this spring and has been in place for three years now. We've had a decrease in the number of responses from our family surveys. So one of the things that we'll be working on for next year is doing more promotion. We send a lot of reminders out, but I think it's important that we get as many responses as we can. We had 612 for this current year, but we want to make sure that we get as many responses as we can. And you can see for both the district and the school, that promoter score, those continue to go up with our families, 51 for the district level and 50 at the school level. And then again, the top couple of areas to celebrate. My student school building is clean and well-maintained. 94% agreed with that and only 2% disagreed. My family is proud to be Red Hawks, which is a very important question. 90% agreed and only 4% disagreed. You can read the rest of the areas to celebrate. And then a couple of opportunities for growth. I feel the nutrition team's offerings are satisfactory. 53% agreed and 23% disagreed. School rules and discipline are enforced consistently. 63% agreed and 17% disagreed. And I regularly receive helpful impact from school staff on how well my student is doing at school. 67% agreed with that and 21% disagreed.
Rich, I have a question on the one from the families. There were some open-ended questions that were included in there. How are those shared with... I think one of them was like, you want to recognize a staff member or something. I didn't share that with those.
Yeah, each principal and director has access to their school's individual respondents. They have access to the district-wide ones, but also to their schools. And then they share those with the areas to celebrate and the opportunities for growth out with their staff.
Do they see the narrative portion of the... Because there was directions.
There were some really nice comments.
There's some I was the opposite.
Those are shared out with the staff member and the principals and directors share those out with their full staff. Some really wonderful comments. People think extremely highly of our districts. That's great.
Rich, in the top section, it says, "2023 1098 surveys were started and finished in 2024 and 2025." What triggers that starting factor? Is it just opening email, or do they actually have to start the process?
Carrie might know the answer better than I do. Carrie?
They have to start the process. So it's beyond the introduction and actually it's a diverse set of questions.
Okay, so that number looks like it's decreasing, which is great. But the number that have finished it is decreasing as well. So is there a better way for us to entice these families to partake in that? Or is it just, it is what it is?
Obviously, we want to get as many responses as we can. Send it out. We send reminders. We send an email blast out to folks. We have all of our families' email addresses to Skyward, and we send multiple reminders.
I just got one in here.
We'll continue to promote it and look for other ways, additional ways that we can promote it.
I would speculate. First year, we were excited about something, and the second year, we're just doing the same thing. I don't think it's exciting. But one thing I will say is I appreciate the fact that you kept the questions the same. That's the way to do it, insert the metrics, and send it across the board in linear data, which is awesome. As far as the number going down, I'm going to make the assumption that we end up in the same window of communication all three years and the same process. It's just a thing that we have to sort of honor and figure out.
I think in part, we would share that sometimes when people are feeling good about what's happening, they'll fill the survey out. Reversely, that sometimes can be the case too. If they're not feeling good about some things that are happening, they'll fill the survey out too. Sometimes the lack of response can be a sign that people aren't upset with things that are happening.
I just echo that with, like I said earlier. When I was here, it was really quick. Like, I just did this, you know? I don't know if you can get... I totally talked about last year. That could be solid.
The other thing that we do is we ask parents to fill it out for each of their children if they have multiple children that are in school, because we want that specific data for each school. And I think the first year that we did it, we got a lot more parents than filled it out multiple times. And each year, there's been fewer of those too. They're less likely to fill it out multiple times.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for sharing that, David. And I believe you're on for the next one. I'll say it just the state budget update.
Yeah, one last thing that I had is the state budget update. As we all know, the state legislature has been meeting and is working on the state budget for the upcoming biennial. And a lot of the things that they're discussing impact K-12 public education. So I wanted to give an update. There's not a lot of new news. But the Joint Finance Committee started their executive sessions on Thursday of last week, so that kind of gets the ball rolling a little bit more than it had been. There's a continued push by some for additional special education reimbursement for K-12 public schools, restoring the revenue limit index to inflation, expansion of mental health initiatives and access to healthy school meals. Governor Evers, in his budget request, requested 334 per pupil increase in the revenue limit funding for the first year at $345 for the second year of the biennial, and an increase in per pupil categorical aids in the first year of $58 and in the second year of $15. But that's the governor's request and his budget, and the legislature needs to approve theirs. The list of lawmakers, the list that lawmakers eliminated from the governor's budget proposal to the public schools included provisions on free school meals, a grow-your-own-teaching program, sharing access to mental health supplies at schools, funding for the Office of School Safety, and a provision to cap participation in the state's voucher programs. And the outlook is unclear on when we might hear next steps or when the budget deliberation process will be finalized. So we're making our best estimate and projection on revenues for next year. But as everyone knows, our school district and every school district's revenues are very dependent on what comes out of the state's biennial budget.
Any questions or...
Rich, you said, what, $50 or $58 for categorical aid?
$58 in the first year and then an additional $50 in the second year.
What is that comparable to? Like, what's today's?
Ross?
Let's say Ross.
742.
742 per pupil aid. So that would put it at 800 the first year.
330, so.
Yeah. Put it at 800 first year and 50 the second year.
Any other questions? I think we'll make a super weekly workshop on changes.
Joe was finding to give that as the board president.
Hi, Shannon. Obviously, we were all there except for Jen. So I can recap it. More for the audience than the board members, of course. So yeah, I had reached out to Shayna Lewis, who's the attorney at Brennan Lewis &amp; Lacy that we worked with very closely. She's worked with us for a number of years. Shayna has a PowerPoint that, as you can see here, it's called Roles and Responsibilities of Wisconsin Public School Board and Indigenous Board Members. And most of us have seen that at least once, some of us more than once. And Shayna does a wonderful job of walking through both ethically what we're required to do and then statutorily what some of the obligations and responsibilities are for general board members. There's a specific piece that addresses officers and school boards, et cetera. So I reached out to Shayna. We've had her come down a number of times. I don't know if it's been every year, but we try to do it somewhere regularly and have her walk through that PowerPoint. And even though someone like myself has heard it a number of times, you always gain some insight, some nuggets, some peace there that helps all of us do our jobs a little better or understand what our roles and responsibilities are. So I don't know if anybody else can offer whatever they got out of it, but I think that's just an overview of what we did so that folks can kind of understand.
I would value add that Shayna does a great job of presenting this material and understanding, straight talking about it. I think everybody gets on the board for a lot of reasons, but I think it's because of how she helps us to understand how we can help. It's not always obvious. She does a great job of probably delivering her own presentation. Appreciate the way Shayna gives herself. Yeah, a lot of them.
I agree with Joe and Nate. You kind of get something different every time you get through it, because there's a lot of data. Never seemed to have more than that chunk of time to get through it, but you kind of pick different things up, so it hits very well.
Thank you, David.
Yeah.
And next move to the Human Resources Committee, and I assume the word for your server will be.
Yeah, thanks.
HR committee met last week. I made the first item on the agenda, discussion on possible action on 2025-26 teacher contracts. As outlined in the memo, at our last meeting, the Board of Education ratified the 2025-26 budget bargain agreement with the Milton Education Association, which resulted in a base wage decrease of 2.95%. In addition, the Board approved a market adjustment of $343 to the 2025-26 teacher contract rate. These actions brought the new base wage to $50,600. Human Resources and Bureau of Departments have compiled the 2025-26 contracts for the board's consideration. Attached in Word docs are the new proposed salary matrix, teacher contract template, and list of staff group receiving contracts. Also included is the supplemental teacher contract compensation. Please note, however, that no changes are being proposed in this list. A change was also made in the teacher contract template that allows the superintendent to weigh liquidate damage which aligns with recurring practice. Chris, did you have anything to add to that?
Nothing else there.
I will make a motion to approve the 2025-26 teacher contract.
Second. So motion for your consent from Tracy. Any questions or comments? All those who agree, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Vote to赞成.
Next, item is discussion and possible action on 2025-26 support staff health insurance premium recommendations. For 2025... Excuse me. For 2025-26, administration is estimating that the district's overall contribution to employee medical insurance will increase by approximately $460,000. The district's total spend on medical insurance costs is estimated to increase just under $5.1 million for all staff during 2025-26. The HR committee and Board of Education have also made a long-term goal to standardize the level of district employee contributions for its healthcare. Since 2023, that proposed target for all employee groups has been 15%. In February of '23, the Board approved the recommendation of increasing the teaching staff and administrative health insurance premium to 15%. An increase in the support staff health insurance premium to 10% for the 23-24 year. In April of '24, the Board approved the recommendation of increasing the support staff health insurance premiums from 10% to 12% for the 2025-26 year. 2024-25, 12%. After a focused review of our population health data, including the district's continued higher-than-expected medical loss ratio and implementation of a wellness incentive to improve population well-being, the HR committee and administration are recommending changing the employee portion of the health insurance premium for support staff from 12% to 15% for the 2025-26 year. The committee would like to thank all the staff for their help in getting their preventative wellness visits done. This allowed the district to get the 99% rate increase from coming here as opposed to the 11.9%, which would have occurred if the 70% wellness visits had not happened. You ahead to that, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to modify the employee's share of health insurance premium for the 2025-26 plan year, changing the employee portion of the premium for support staff from 10% to 15%.
Second. So motion for your consent from Jen. Any questions or comments? All those who agree, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Vote to赞成.
Next item is discussion on the 2025-26 insurance open enrollment campaign. Following that, Board action on support staff health insurance premiums, the HR department will share open enrollment information to all staff. Your sphere's open enrollment window is shorter than it has been in the past due to Dean's transfer to review enrollment system. Open enrollment will begin tomorrow, May 13, and continue through May 20. Special thanks to our HR team, as this is a very busy time of year for them. So thanks to Chris and Marcy and Chris for all the hard work. Thank you. This is just informational tonight. Any questions on that? Next item is discussion and possible action on support staff compensation. When determining compensation for our employee groups, the district aims to maintain a highly effective staff by offering competitive wages and benefits while appearing to balance the budget. This compensation strategy supports our strategic plan called to retain and attract high-quality staff by maintaining a competitive compensation benefits package for all employee groups. Attached in the memo are the proposed new starting rates for various positions. Note that wages vary by employees of individual percent increase will also vary. Total support staff group adjustment would be a 4% increase, which includes the base adjustments outlined in the memo and the corresponding staff adjustment. Also included in the memo are the historical document, which outlines increases the support staff have received over the past six years. If the proposed starting rates are approved... If approved tonight, these new starting rates, the HR and payroll departments will create letters of appointment for the support staff and bring support staff lists to our next board meeting on May 27, for review and possible approval. You ahead to that, Chris?
Interesting.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the 2025-26 support staff outreach rates.
So motion for your consent from Jen. Any questions or comments?
I just want to address an email we got from some of the support staff. Emails like that are hard to get, right? Talking about real-life things for these people. And as board member, that's one of the hardest things we have to do is with staff compensation and benefits and whatnot. But I want the support staff to know a lot of time that we as a board put in, but more, you know, to the north from Rich and Ross and Rick, the HR committee, tremendous amount of time. So I think, as tough as it is, I think they put together a pretty good matrix. It's a hard thing tonight to pull that stuff like this. So just wanted to share that.
Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. No questions.
Final item is the discussion and possible action on all staff paid time off compensation. Administration and the HR committee have been working to develop a sustainable paid time off structure that promotes and rewards longevity for all benefit eligible employee groups in the district. In line with our district's strategic plan to maintain competitive compensation and benefit packages for all employees, the thorough review of our PTO structure has been done and we received feedback from the benefits advisory group. The recommended details are outlined in the memo and in the Word docs. The financial impacts of these proposed changes will vary based on the number of staffs retiring, with up to 60 all-purpose days available. The annual voluntary pay will be manageable within current budgetary allowances. The HR team is currently developing a handbook language to provide parameters for use of all of these days in consideration of these changes. The proposed language will be presented for discussion at an upcoming HR meeting. It's also important to note that for the upcoming school year, there have been 18 employees whose all-purpose day balances currently exceed the proposed 90-day maximum. These staff members will be allowed to maintain their current maximum accrual threshold while employed in a benefit eligible position with the district. All other employees will be subject to the proposed 90-day maximum. Can I add to this? Make a motion to modify the employee paid time off benefits for the 2025-26 school year by one, setting the annual accrual quota maximum to 90 days for all employee groups; two, establishing retirement payouts for all employee groups to the maximum of 60 days; three, adjusting payroll and retirement payout rates as proposed.
Second. So I'm going to change for the Secretary Tracy. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. No questions. Third quarter financial reports.
This evening, I'm bringing forward what we discussed beginning the second quarter is our current financial report structure before we go back to the board and moving forward on the school year. What you're looking at tonight is an updated version of the report that we saw a couple of less time. I noticed that it looks slightly different. We just completed our software migration to Skyline Q10 in the last couple of months, so the report format has been rebuilt from the ground up to nimbical, less government task reports, but with a new code page. Quick update on highlights of what we have tonight. On the revenue side, our general fund revenues are at approximately 16% for the period ending March 31, which we buy. Within the general fund, we have local revenues outside of our tax levy, such as interest earnings that will likely increase again before year-end, and we are noticing those numbers to begin to stabilize in this quarter. State revenues to date represent payments of our general state aid, and so far, our industry receives 75% of that allowance. We've seen the balance of that in June, but the rest of it is foreseeable at year-end. Federal revenues represent claims on our ESEA grants, including Title I through March 21st. Our other revenue category and fund management represents our primary reimbursement on ECT grants that were deferred at year-end but claimed after we were completed, and from our old head corporate directors and staff that were sent again last year. Their special education fund, our operating transfers, represent approximately 66% or two-thirds of our overall special education budget. This transfers budget as an expense in the general fund and as a revenue in the special education fund, but transfers are performed at year-end, as we must be punctual to a certain whole based on all activity through each year. State revenues in our special education funds represent approximately 30% of, not sure, state revenues represent approximately 2/3 of the special education budget, about 30% of which is the special education category. To date, we've received about 70% of our categorical pay reimbursement, again, held to be coming through at the end of this year. Our debt service fund and our long-term capital maintenance fund represents the tax levy indicated, tax levy approved in October of this past fall, and any interest earned in those funds from beginning of the year. Our food service program for revenues include our global paid sales and federal reimbursement for the national school lunch program. I do want to note the national school lunch program revenues are claimed monthly and land behind paid meals from the posted. Also of note is that the federal national school lunch program provided initial funding tied to pandemic rate in previous years. These programs have ended, and we are now on a richer basis this year. Our employment trust fund revenues include only our interest earnings today as a defined contribution to those funds we've done at year-end based on our planned old debt and actual requirements. And finally, our community service funds with lots of tax approvals and a month worth of $345 school year, and all reviews of these to date we have right program. On the expenditure side of the budget, we have approximately 15% spend period end of March. As a reminder, we won't talk about the budget, 75% of our budget is for title and staffing costs. Through the end of March, we expect to see salary and benefits expenditures in the range of about 68% to 72% through most payrolls, and the earnings are the budget containing work contracted services, and they also have staff included in them, by detracting some higher based on their expenditures for the year. In our instructional function, this is where the primary amount of our staff will live throughout the course of the year, and that's why some of these functions will track that are close to each other. There are some curriculum and supply budgets in these building budgets as well, but for the most part, these salary budgets are taken most effectively. All of these others are tracking where expected through the end of March, as are the student services, applicable services expenditures, which would allot contracted service payments for things that are reversing progress in health and other things that are doing in our schedule. Our instructional staff services area includes some year-round staff here at district offices as well as ESEA state annual budgets. Expenditures in areas such as insurance and debt service budgets will usually occur towards the beginning of the year, which is why most functions in particular are not particularly high at the beginning of the year and throughout the year, particularly for any further concern. Expenditures for other support services include our technology staff and our equipment budgets. This also includes a component of staff, but also includes our equipment need throughout the year and may have flow based on our replacements and more if we're replacing the items that are unexpected. Our inter-fund transfers and instructional service payments usually don't show up until closer to year-end. The exception to this is the instructional services area, which is where we charge all our substitute teachers that run through our 430,000, 430 functions in the overco. We will see things like open enrollment payments in our inter-fund transfers post, as I mentioned, revenue side of the budget at the end of year-end. In the special education fund specifically, we see a similar pattern to the general fund in terms of staffing and expenditures. Expenditures and functions, all these centers are also tracking where expended expected at the beginning of March. Areas such as transportation, contracted substitute teachers are running a little bit higher than other functions in special education area. This is also expected as transportation is good. We finish out here in the next couple of weeks, by through March, we have the majority of those funds at the door. For our instructional service payments, we also have substitute costs as a larger component of 430 functions. We do have a larger component of that in some cost this year due to a long-term, um, some of these people services area. In the debt service fund, we now have our payments for the fall and spring principal and interest payments for our capital investment measures. And our food service program expenditures are currently lagging slightly behind our prior year budget, due in parts to vacancies we had up here that we are a bit worried about, and expected expenditures through the end of March. In the employment trust fund, we don't have any activity through March because these are the actuarial journal entries that occur at year-end based on existing payrolls and activity that was required for our action, especially for all staff. And our community service fund also includes a component payroll as well as program costs for that right program. With that, if there's any additional questions on this report, so otherwise, if we need to dive into more detail, happy to. If you have information, I'll be ready.
Any questions? Thanks so much. Let's move on to action on the staffing reports.
All those who prefer the staffing report as presented.
Second. A motion for the Secretary Tracy. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. No questions. Action on gift information.
Make a motion to approve the gift information.
Second.
A motion for the Secretary John. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. No questions. Meeting days.
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Tuesday, May 27 at 6:30 PM. Note that that Tuesday meeting is because Memorial Day is on our normal fourth Monday of the month, so Tuesday, May 27 at 6:30. And then we have a couple committee meetings that we will need to schedule. An HR committee meeting before the next board meeting, so sometime between now and the next board meeting, and a policy committee meeting sometime before the June 23 board meeting, so we've got some more time to get that policy committee meeting in. In past years, we put committee schedules at the board meeting, or committee makeup at the board meeting after the organization meeting, so if you want to follow that same model, we would put committee makeup on the agenda for this coming board meeting. My recommendation for the HR committee for the time between now and the next board meeting is to keep, obviously, all committees stay the same until they are changed, but we're in the middle of some things with the current HR committee. That's our order.
Yes, and I would ask, over these different preferences for committees, you could email these in the next week, or I can, if I have a ready for you.
We will also be signatures from the new officers.
Do you need those tonight?
Yeah.
Chelsea's back, and we can get them before we go into exact session, if that's all.
Anything else? What about?
We are going to be scheduling these scheduled appointments, and maybe we'll have a next committee as well. I will, Chelsea's part to judge on the first, so it'll have to be sometime next week.
All right. Motion to go into executive session, consider to establish statute 1985 Jones 2 and 1982 1, considering a finer provision compensation for performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body of jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Discussion on 25-26 to demonstrate supervisor compensation on class checks.
Second.
Motion for Joe on second, and Rick, your call.
Can I share something before the vote?
Yes.
At the in-executive sessions, the board should give approval to anyone beyond the board that takes part in it, and this is a carryover from the HR committee exec session at that one. I was there, but Chelsea didn't stay, and we have potential to come back into open session. We could either have Kerry Clubbey hang out until we're done and then come back and livestream if we come back in, or we could have Kerry close down the livestream and then live livestream. And either way, the minutes that would be in Word docs will reflect the action that the board takes. And if the board would like Ross and Chris to be in executive session for any reason, they should let them know, too, otherwise they will probably be taken off.
I would think the HR committee on that.
Yeah, I'd like Ross and Chris to stay, at least for part of our session, please.
I don't think.
I don't think so. I don't, I think Kerry could go.
All right.
Indeed, yeah. Your call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And it's yes. We're in closed session.